I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council Meeting of January 18, 2022, to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by myself this evening. If everybody would please join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses; as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen. Ms. Chan for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Yanatuno. Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Here.
And Councilmember Gilligan.
Let the record show that four of the six council members are present this evening. I do have a special meeting announcement this evening. A special meeting will take place on Friday, January 28 at 4:30 PM to discuss the following legislation. Resolution 22-8, Ordinance 22-5, Ordinance 22-6, Ordinance 22-7, Ordinance 22-8, Ordinance 22-9, and Ordinance 22-10. We're now under petitions. Are there any petitions this evening?
There are no petitions, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Minutes, minutes for January 4th were distributed. Hopefully, everybody has had a chance to review them. Are there any questions, additions, or corrections? All right, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Committee reports. Anyone from the Finance Committee have a report?
Our report, Madam President.
Thank you, Danny. Long Community Planning, Danny, you are also the only member of that.
Our report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilman Rhodes.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers Committee, Councilman Perkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, anyone from that committee have a report?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Committee of the Whole, does anyone see the need for a Committee of the Whole meeting? Okay, we're now under reports of the officers. Mayor Aaron DeMoss.
Thank you, Madam President. First off, this evening, we have Chief Pauli here, who, Chief Pauli, we've had two council meetings now, and he's been at both of them to address you all, so.
We expect this every week now, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if he's running for the vacant seat on council or what. But, uh...
No, thank you.
Chief, take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, members of the council. I'd like to ask Jason Windsor, Lieutenant Jason Windsor, to stand. Why don't you come up here, Jason? See your face? Over a year ago, Jason Windsor was approached by the city leaders and asked if he'd be willing to take a role as the interim police chief while a process for a nationwide search, assessment center, and interviews occurred to find the city's next police chief. Reluctantly, Lieutenant Windsor accepted the role. To be clear, Jason's reluctance was not a product of being bashful, shy, or sheepish to take on this leadership position. For those that don't know Jason, I'm here to tell you, that is not who he is. You always know where Jason Windsor stands on something, on any issue really, and where you stand with him. Jason already was and is currently a leader at the Tiffin Police Department, and the men and women that work with him know he is anything but a shy or sheepish leader. No, Lieutenant Windsor's reluctance was more about his passion for his position at the time as patrol lieutenant. You see, Lieutenant Windsor is a cop's cop. He enjoys working on the road and handling calls side by side with his fellow officers. He's not only earned the respect from his teammates, but also the Tiffin City administrators, as well as many folks he's encountered out on the street, and even some of those that he's arrested over the years. This is who he is. So when he was asked to step up to be the interim chief, he did. Of course he did, because that is who Jason Windsor is. I'm positive when he accepted the interim chief role, Lieutenant Windsor did not anticipate he would be in the position for over a year. No one did. COVID-19 was raging, and it made it very difficult to conduct comprehensive interviews and an assessment process for the chief, so those were postponed. Lieutenant Windsor was approached once again and asked if he would continue as interim for a little bit longer. He, of course, said he would, because that's who Jason Windsor is. During his time as interim chief, Lieutenant Windsor wore many hats. He, of course, took on all the responsibilities as chief, the meetings, the decision-making, and keeping the department moving forward. He also continued to maintain his role as patrol lieutenant and eventually was working triple duty when the retirement of an administrative lieutenant forced yet another hat for Lieutenant Windsor to wear. Of course, many of those duties were delegated to others to help out, but for a time, Lieutenant Windsor represented 75% of the command staff at Tiffin Police Department. There was a lot to ask of Jason, and I know it was stressful, it was a stressful time for both he and his wife, Kara. But this, too, is who Jason Windsor is, always stepping up for a challenge. Tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize and thank Lieutenant Windsor for the work he did for the Tiffin Police Department and this community. We also have an opportunity to thank Jason's wife, Kara, as she bore some of this burden as well. So with that said, Kara, will you please stand up? I'll stand here. Kara Windsor, I want to personally thank you for the support and patience you've provided to Jason during the past year. I'm sure you felt all his frustrations and struggles, and you did what you always have done. You had Jason six the entire time. Thank you. Lieutenant Jason Windsor, for your overall contributions and exceptional leadership service as interim police chief throughout 2021, you are being recognized for your devotion to the Tiffin Police Department and the community we serve. You are the epitome of what this award stands for and a great example of true meritorious leadership at work. You are hereby commended for performing outstanding, meritorious service over and above normal levels of the extent, for an extended period of time, while in the role of responsibility and leadership. Thank you, Lieutenant Jason Windsor. Our community, our department, and I all owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you and congratulations.
Go Blue.
Well, up until then, I was going to say some really nice things. But I guess at this point, all's I can say is nine out of 10 or something like that. Jason, you know, your service to this community and to the city has just been phenomenal. I know I've shared that with you a lot along the way. And when we first talked about this, it was going to be six, seven months, then it turned into 10 months, then it turned into over a year. And I came away more thoroughly impressed with your leadership than I ever thought I was going to. I knew you as leader of the department from before you even stepped into this role. And it was really just, it was very nice to know that I didn't have to stress out over how things were being run, what was going on in that department with your leadership. And you've just been a tremendous asset for a number of years for this department, and we never want to see you leave. I know that day will eventually come, but your leadership has just been phenomenal. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you've done. Kara, thank you for allowing him to do it. We all know who runs things there, but you all have been just phenomenal. You really have. You've got a great family, so thank you for everything that you've done to keep the department and the leadership structure in place over there. We all salute you for what you've done.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. It was a very stressful year, but it's over and... I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
The next item, typically I read these, not going to. I don't have enough of a voice. I am still trying to get over the crud that I had at the last council meeting that caused me to miss this. But this is essentially, the next week coming up, the 23rd through 29th of January is School Choice Week in the city of Tiffin and across the United States. But as I said, I'm not going to read this this evening. We don't have a representative here either for this, and typically I try to, but if I go through that, I'm going to cough my brains out and not be able to tell you anything else important. So, School Choice Week, it is obviously very important. The city of Tiffin recognizes it, the state of Ohio does, as well as the federal government, to allow individuals to be able to make decisions on schools and where they're going to have their education be taught. A few quick items. A few quick items. Financial update, you all are receiving those, so I'm not going to go as in-depth as I typically am. We're doing very well for the first couple of weeks of the year financially. We're about 78% of where we were ahead, or where we were last year at this time, which is very good, because we finished last year with the highest January income tax collections we've ever had. However, there was still a long way to go this month. They did trickle in very slowly last year, so it will be interesting to see where the rest of this month goes, but still a very good position. I know Council President Boyle did a very nice job of explaining last meeting to you all that we actually finished last year with the highest income tax collections we've ever had here in the city. We are up almost 6.7% from the previous year, and it was the first time ever that we cracked $11 million in income tax revenue. Never has happened before. I actually finished a little over $11.1 million. But with that, as you all are seeing on the news, inflation is sky-high, so we're also seeing a lot of items that are going through the roof. The various departments from police to fire, public works, engineers, they're all telling me everything that they have gotten quotes on in past years are all substantially higher than what they have had in previous years. So it is a concern going forward. While you get excited when your income tax revenues are up almost 7%, we're seeing the cost of a lot of things go up nearly that. So it is much more of a wash than what a typical 7% would look like due to inflation that hopefully will slow down here soon. The 31st of January is the deadline that we have given all of our departments at the city to have their plans together and to us, us being myself and the city administrator, for how they would like to propose spending their American Rescue Plan Act dollars. That is the ARPA funds. With that, the city of Tiffin received $1.8 million from the federal stimulus program that was the American Rescue Plan. We now are nearly to the point that we're going to begin prioritizing all of the asks that we have had from departments. Some of them were very quick and easy. As you already know, they were included in the budget this year. Some new vehicles that were self-sanitizing, a new self-sanitizing machine for the fire department to help keep their turnout gear clean and remove some of the carcinogens or potential pathogens and other things on there. But that only scratched the surface of the 1.8 million. So this coming 31st is the deadline for departments to have those requests into us. From that point, myself, the city administrator, are going to sit down with departments, kind of flesh out why they've asked for it, how important these various items may be, and from that, obtain a priority list on how we're going to spend, let's say it's more like 1.5 million now after these other items, how we're going to spend those funds. And then we'll be coming to city council later this year with those plans of how we're recommending the spending of those dollars and what best helps our community, because at the end of the day, we know we need to spend every dime of it, because if we don't, it will go back to the federal government, and it will be redistributed to cities in California and New York and Tennessee and Florida and all over. We need to make sure our tax money at least is going to be stays and spent here in Tiffin, Ohio. It's not like we return the money and it goes back to pay off the federal deficit or anything. No, it's going to go to another community and be spent, so let's make sure we keep this money here in Tiffin and do things that we can help Tiffin families with, with the funds. So that will be coming to you all here in the very near future. I am excited to announce that the city of Tiffin did indeed receive our Main Street accreditation at both the state and the national level. I spoke with David Zach earlier today, and a press release will be going out either yet this evening or tomorrow morning to announce that, but it's now the sixth consecutive year that we have been both state and federally accredited as part of the Main Street program. And Francis Joe Hamilton, the advisor, the individual that was here to score us and to determine if we'd receive our accreditation, came away thoroughly impressed once again with Tiffin. She has such great things to say about this community. The only thing she was sad about was that she loves Tiffin so much, she wasn't able to come here in person. A lot of the state organizations are not allowing their employees to travel yet, so she had to do things virtually, but she talked about how much she loves Tiffin. I know Steve Leopard was a part of that meeting as well. Steve, was there anything fun I left out of that, or did I get it pretty well?
You're thorough.
Good, good. So, very positive, though. We're very proud of that accomplishment here in Tiffin, Ohio, especially since we were one of the first communities to ever try to become a Main Street community in the whole country, and we lost out to Madison, Indiana, and we never again were able to do this. And this was all the way back, I believe, the '70s. And here we are in Tiffin now. We finally got it, and we're not going to let it go. So six consecutive years ever since we've been accredited. We do have some growing concern with the Ellis Street Bridge, that prices are going through the roof on things. There was a recently completed project in the state of Ohio. It was a bridge over twice the size of ours, but the inflation was almost 25% from their original cost estimates. So we are very concerned that this bridge that we think we know pretty well what's going to cost may actually have another, anywhere from $250,000 to $750,000 of expenses due to no fault of anyone other than the overall state of the economy right now and inflation. So we're quite concerned with that. We're still planning to move forward with the bidding on it, because the bridge needs replaced, and there's no guarantee that inflation's going to slow down. So we'd rather get this moving as quickly as possible so that we can at least lock this price in at the best rate that we can versus continuing to wait. Every day that we wait, the price and the price tag on this thing is probably just going up. And then last but not least, Kathy let me know today that there's been a ton of activity on the online payment plan. I want to once again thank Kathy, because I have been saying for about the last seven to eight years that I have wanted online payment options here at the city. And Kathy is, and it's no slight to anyone else, but Kathy's the first finance director of three that I've had that has grabbed the bull by the horns and gotten it done. So Kathy, I can't thank you enough. The residents, from what I hear, are loving it. I know we've had a few hiccups, that there's been a few times the link has gone down and been a few other issues, but people are loving the fact that they don't have to walk in here or lick a stamp and put it on an envelope, that they can go right online and pay their sewer bill and other things. So it's just, I have heard so many good things in the public. I've been at stores when I haven't been sick, which I haven't been often. I have been out to eat, I've been talking to folks, and they've all been telling me that they're very glad that that has happened. So thank you, thank you, thank you for getting that done, Kathy. That concludes my report. And if there's anything else you'd like me to squeak about, I'd be happy to do so.
Anyone have questions for the mayor? Awesome, thank you, Mayor. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have the financial report for December 2021. Total receipts for the month were $3,901,098.55. Total expenses for the month were $3,720,685.60. The general fund unencumbered balance is $4,227,694.37. Income tax receipts for December 2021 were $1,010,724.85. The total annual increase in income tax collections for December 2021 when compared to December 2020 was $63,093.69. Year-to-date, our income tax receipts were up 6.67%. The portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for December 2021 was $125,420.60. The unexpendable balance for all funds is $32,41,881.58, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Kathy, does anyone have questions for the finance director? Yes, Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to ask for approval of the Director of Finance report for December 31st of 2021.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to approve the finance director's report. Is there a second? That's Councilman Jones.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Awesome, thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you, and I apologize. I had another engagement that I had, a meeting I had to attend, so I missed the Committee of the Whole. I do want to remind you, and maybe you've already discussed it, that Ordinance 22-3 needs to be tabled tonight. That ordinance is part of the road and bridge levy, the continuation of road and bridge levy. That's the ordinance that increases or maintains the 1/4% addition for road and bridge. It will go into effect at the end of the current levy. That ordinance is presented to you, but you can't approve it, because only the voters can, as I explained last time. So you need to introduce it like you did, read it tonight for a second time, but then table it tonight. You have to then table waiting for the result of the May primary. So if the voters then approve it, just like they did several years ago, then you will take it off the table and approve it. It will then become law. If the voters voted down, then you would take it off the table and vote it down, but you have to table it at this time, after your second reading. So after second reading tonight, it'd be appropriate for the president to entertain a motion to table Ordinance 22-3, waiting for the results of the May primary. Any questions about that particular item? Then, just to go with that, the other part of the road and bridge levy is the Resolution 22-7, which is up for second reading tonight, and you'll have your third reading at your special meeting next week, and then it will be approved at that time, so it can be then presented to the Board of Elections in time to be placed on the ballot in May. The deadline is February 2nd, and so you need to take action. I know you've scheduled that meeting in order to take the necessary action for that to be in place. Any questions about that item of legislation?
That also is tabled, or no?
No, no, that continues on, because you need to take action in order to place that on the ballot.
Right, okay.
Any questions about either item of legislation? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for the law director? Awesome, all right. We are now under written communications.
Okay, we have Mayor's Request for Legislation, number 22-1, Road Salt Acquisition.
Mayor's Request for Legislation, number 22-1, will be forwarded to the Finance Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation, number 22-2, for the City Hall Annex renovation.
Mayor's Request, excuse me, Mayor's Request for Legislation, 22-2, will be forwarded to the Finance Committee.
Mayor's Request for Legislation, number 22-3, Appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals of Paul F. Burdis.
Mayor's Request for Legislation, 22-3, will be forwarded to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Then we have a new one that was given to me this evening. It's Mayor's Request for 20, it's not in your packet. It's Mayor's Request for Legislation, number 22-4, Sale of Property to Hoptometry Brewing Company.
Mayor's Request for Legislation, number 22-4, will be forwarded to the Economic Development and Downtown Planning Committee.
Then we have Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-22-1, to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds into the Police and Fire Department budgets.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-22-1, legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-22-2, to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate an additional $7.40 each into the transfer budget lines for Funds 338 and Fund 331.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-22-2, legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-22-3, to appropriate funds in the Mayor's Telecommunications expense line of $800.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F-22-3, legislation has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number 22-4, to amend the 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate funds in the sewer engineering service expense line, $150,000.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number 22- Finance Director's request for legislation, number 22-4, legislation has also been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And then we have mayor's letters of appreciation to Tiffin Westgate Visconsi for their $500 donation to the Tiffin Police Department, and another one from Phyllis Cappuccini for her donation of $100 to the Tiffin Police Department at this time.
Mayor's letters of appreciation will be held on file in the clerk's office.
That concludes the written communications.
Awesome, thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to Council President. Seeing none, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? Seeing none, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number 22-7, introduced by Ben Gillig. A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend Sections 197.012 and 197.013 of the codified ordinances of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, in order to provide for the continuation of the city's 1/4% municipal income tax increase during the period from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2028, to provide funds to pay certain costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving public streets in the city and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of resolution 22-7.
Resolution number 22-8, introduced by Jeff Rhodes. A resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2022 of municipally-owned personal property which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 721.15D and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of resolution 22-8.
Ordinance number 21-121, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a deed and a temporary easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire property by deed and easement from the Board of Education to the Tiffin City School District, aka Tiffin City Board of Education, to construct the new Ella Street Bridge, River Bridge.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-121. Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask counsel for passage of ordinance 21-121.
There's a motion on the table to pass ordinance 21-121. Is there a second? Yes, Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Madam President.
There's a first and a second. I'll ask, is there any discussion? Sorry. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll and the passage.
Councilman Jones.
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-121 passes with a vote of four to zero.
Ordinance number 21-122, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a deed and an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire property by a deed and a temporary easement from Aqua Ohio Incorporated, FKA Ohio American Water Company, to construct the new Ella Street River Bridge.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-122. Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask counsel for their passage of ordinance 21-122.
There's a motion to pass ordinance 21-122. Is there a second? Yes, Councilman Rhodes.
Yes, Madam President. I will second that motion.
Thank you. So there's a first and a second to pass ordinance 21-122. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance 21-122 passes with a vote of four to zero.
Ordinance number 22-1, introduced by Ken Jones. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire real property rights from Heidelberg University to construct repairs and improvements to the Rock Creek Wall and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-1.
Ordinance number 22-3, introduced by Ben Gillig. An ordinance amending Sections 197.012 and 197.013 of the codified ordinances of the City of Tiffin, Ohio, in order to provide for the continuation of the city's existing 1/4% municipal income tax levy during the period from January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2028, to provide funds to pay certain costs of maintaining, repairing, and improving public streets in the city.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-3. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for city council to table ordinance 22-3, reading the results of the May 2022 primary.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table to table ordinance 22-3. Is there a second? Yes, Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Madam President.
There's a first and a second to table ordinance 22-3. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
And Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-3 is tabled with a vote of four to zero.
Ordinance number 22-5, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate a total of $700 into the police and fire department budgets for donations received.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-5.
Ordinance number 22-6, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $7.40 each into the transfer budget lines for fire vehicle fund 338 and capital improvements fund 331, authorizing the transfer of the appropriated funds and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-6.
Ordinance number 22-7, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $800 in the mayor's telecommunications expense line.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-7.
Ordinance number 22-8, introduced by Jeff Rhodes. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a license and an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire real property rights from Our Investments LLC and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-8.
Ordinance number 22-9, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for construction, administration, and inspection services for the Ella Street River Bridge project and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-9.
Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for consulting services and preparation of the engineering and design for development of a plan for multi-use trails within the city and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-10.
Ordinance number 22-11, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance amending 2022 Budget Ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $150,000 in the sewer engineering service expense line for the Household Sewer Treatment Systems, HSTS, elimination project.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-11.
And that concludes the ordinance.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Does anyone have anything for the good of the order? Okay, at this time, I would like to announce that we will be amending the special meeting announcement for the January 25th meeting that is scheduled. We will now be including reviewing Resolution 22-8 and ordinances 22-5, 22-6, 22-7, 22-8, 22-9, and 22-10. And I hope that's the last time I have to say that. Does anyone else have anything? Oh, yes.
If I can add to that, the actual written special meeting announcement needs to be revised, too, and then provide it to all the council members. But I appreciate the announcement. Thank you.
Anything else? Yes.
I just had one quick question. On 22-3 that's now tabled, if we say we go to the election and it doesn't go through, then what do we do with it at that point?
You would take it off the table, and then follow the voters' wishes, and you'd vote it down.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you, guys.